Welcome everybody to our special meeting on the Department of Education. And what we call meeting order at six forty. Right now, please stand in place. My dearest flag, United States of America, and to the Republic that we are a nation, God, His love, liberty, and justice for all. Our agenda tonight is very short, a meeting. We're here on agenda item number three day. We approve the three year probationary employment of Brian Fift as the Director of Technology in Learning and Athletics effective March twenty second, two thousand and twenty one, and authorize the superintendent school to execute the resulting employment agreement. Is there any question on the board? Got the motion? It's approved. So move by Joe Gilges, second. Second by Mr. Teo Oltega. Stand. So move. Okay. Agenda item number four. Joe, the German at six forty one. Thank you all for coming. Yes, I got you. Again, motion to adjourn meeting at six forty one. So move by Mr. O'Hagan, second. By Mr. McNally Oltega. So move. Okay.
Can you hear? Yeah, can you hear you? Thank you.
That's it? Okay, we'll be into our work session right now. And again, welcome everybody. And you can put in your mind screen. Yeah. Um, our agenda tonight includes the following. Minutes, agenda, minutes of February ninth, two thousand and twenty one. Any questions? Minutes of board. Ben. And questions, any questions on the March sixteenth, board agenda? You have that stat for our. Do you need a minute for that? Okay, sorry.
Um, so. I think that. There are kind of rules for determining now. It is said when they are from the. Oh. This is for some kind of science teacher question. To me, well, actually, none of them like this.
Again, everybody, this is the draft right now, we don't know this, so we don't need any motion to amend that. Your recommendations for moving common on L. Anybody else, any questions? Mr. Good, Mr. What do you? All right. As the discussion seated. First off, I'd like to, uh, give, um, a minute about retiring, uh, learn or students or plans for retired individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Gilges. Uh, we do have a presentation, uh, prepared tonight that, uh, will be provided by Mr. Tech, uh, Mr. Shaker and myself, so the board would like to, um, present the audience and, um, we can begin. Okay, good evening, everyone. Great to see people in the audience, um, and who are coming out. Um, so tonight, uh, we will be reporting to the Board of Education on a proposed reentry plan for our schools. This has been an incredibly difficult year, as you all know, for everyone, and I highly commend our entire school community for their efforts in not just keeping our schools open and running, but allowing our students to learn, remain engaged, and make progress. The time has come at this point in the year for us to reevaluate our plan and look at the possibility of bringing back students full time. We hear a lot in the news about how kids need to get back into schools. This often references schools where students have been fully remote since the pandemic began, and there are many from the different parts of the country, and even if people are home alone. We've been very proud of the model that we had in place since September, but we know that it's not perfect. We know that our students is coming to school every day. We know a hybrid schedule is challenging for many of our students, and you'll hear a little bit about that experience, uh, for them tonight. We also know that the social emotional well being of our students has been compromised, and some students are not making the typical academic progress that they would under regular circumstances. There are many factors that we will share with you that we've gone into considering a change at this point in time, and this tech could go over these along with Mr. Shaker and Roman. We know that whatever decision we make is not going to be the perfect decision for everyone. As we begin our presentation, I'd just like to share a quote. Go back. I'd just like to share a quote that, um, came to mind, and I think it typifies the experience that we're all going through. We are all navigating the same storm, but we're in different modes. And so the experience that everyone has had during COVID has been somewhat different. The reactions to COVID, how we feel about what's going on in our personal lives and in our jobs is very different. But there are many of, there are many factors which affect that. Our family circumstances, our personal health issues, fear, a lot of fear, and fear of getting sick or worse, our particular lifestyles, and various other demands that are put on our time outside of school are all factors that will impact how we navigate pandemic. We have been given guidance from the CDC and from New York State, but that's exactly what it is, it's only guidance. They are not hard, fast regulations for us to follow, which is why you see such great variation in the way districts across our area, our state, and our country are managing their instructional programs. Restaurants, catering halls, movie theaters, and other businesses have all been given capacity percentages that they must follow, but schools have not. Restaurants in New York City are thirty five percent capacity. We've never been given that percentage capacity. We are told that our students need to be six feet apart, and then they can't. We need barriers to mitigate, um, the, the distance. Um, and a capacity of how many students we figure out in each of our classrooms based on that six feet, and we put numbers on each door by based on that six feet. But now, because we know that this has been very difficult for our children, many districts have interpreted that a little bit differently. There is leadway in those regulations. Some districts are using three feet, um, with dividers, and some districts have all students in, every single student in with plastic, well, they really polyparted in dividers, um, in their entire school. We're going to talk about those different models and what the data shows. Therefore, it is up to each individual school district to navigate and make decisions about what's best for their community. We must really turn to the science at this point and look at the data very carefully. We need to try to put the fears aside. Please understand that we have taken into account the input and feedback from all stakeholders that inform the proposal that we're going to share with the board at time. Not everyone is going to agree with what we are proposing, but we hope that with the continued dialogue and listening to the concerns that people have, we will mitigate those individuals' concern. We will mitigate those areas to ensure that everyone continues to feel safe and comfortable in school environment. Our students need to be back in school. I'm sure you've all heard on the news reports concerning the decline in student mental health and social emotional well being that are impacting young people all over the world. We know that school is important for our students for many reasons. We should be proud for all that we do to provide our students, because we certainly educate the whole child, and we can do that as well remotely or even in a hybrid model. Physical school matters, and the personal relationships that students develop with their teachers and one another are critical to their development. The changes that we are proposing tonight will be very closely monitored. The board approves the plan, and everyone should be assured that we will continue to be on top of all of the safety protocols, contact tracing, and monitoring that we have been since the beginning of the year that has allowed us to keep our building open and our students and faculty stay, safe. We have been fortunate that even though we have experienced cases of COVID nineteen in our schools, the numbers have been relatively small, and there has been almost no direct impact on our school community. We have not, we are not aware of any cases that have been transmitted within our schools and our classrooms. We have not seen a direct relationship between individuals being infected within our schools and others becoming infected with the virus. Athletics have now resumed, and we have seen pretty good results with that as well. I think the credit goes to our parents, our students, and our faculty and staff who have followed the health and safety guidelines that we have put in place. Before we begin, I would just like to thank our teachers who have done an outstanding job of coming to work every day, doing the best that they can under very challenging circumstances to keep our students engaged emotionally, engaged emotionally, healthy, and learning. They have all learned new skills, embraced technology, and worked triple time to educate students through our three models. My hat really goes off to all of you, and you have my deepest appreciation. In addition, I would like to thank our administrative team for their diligence, hard work, problem solving skills, and twenty four seven efforts that are necessary in order to keep their building growing. And I would also like to thank our parents for their patience, understanding, and diligence, because what goes on in our community is directly related to the COVID cases that occur in the East Rockaway School District. Parents have been asked to do a lot in this past year, and we appreciate the roles they have taken on and the support and patience they have had with our district during this time. I would also like to thank Mr. Tech, Mr. Yon, Mr. Daley for their hard work in ensuring that our structural plant does, um, that our structural plant is sound and that our facilities are clean and sanitized and the appropriate supports are in place to keep our students, faculty, and staff safe. So, I'm just gonna go back a minute. Um, we've been thinking a lot about this, uh, for several months. We have been looking at the data. We've been keeping our eye on the positivity rate, uh, within the county, within our area. Uh, we've been looking at what other districts are doing. We've been looking at the CDC guidelines and listening to the experts and scientists to hear, and look at the data and see what's going on so that we can make informed decisions. The guiding principles that we followed in returning our students was first and foremost is the social emotional well being of our students. We know that our students are struggling, and Mr. Shaker is going to tell you a little bit about that, and this is really compelling, why we feel that our students need to come back. We're looking at academic outcomes of our students. We've been looking at data, report card grades, uh, mid-year assessment results, and we know that our students are learning, but we also know that they will do better when they are in school, if they are in school full time. Um, the hybrid model is not working for a lot of our students. Mr. Shaker will tell you more about that, because we surveyed our own students. We did look at the impact on faculty and staff, and we know that that's a continued conversation that we have to have. We have to be listening. We have to open lines of communication even more so that when, and if this change happens, um, we are addressing all the concerns that our staff and our faculty have. We also looked at the impact on families. We know that these hybrid schedules are not easy. Parents have jobs to go to, they've got to juggle child, juggle childcare, and it's, it's placed a burden on many of our families. And we also looked at how can we continue to maintain a safe school environment for all if we bring back more students and the capacity in our building is increased? So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to, oh, no, I have my own part. So, uh, I, I found it very interesting that just the other day, um, an article, um, was published in the New York Times, and they, I forgot what the title was, but it was really about asking what are the experts saying? And they asked pediatricians and health, uh, experts across the country, um, what they think about schools and whether or not students should be back and how the COVID situation is impacted. And these are some of the, um, quotes, but basically, they were pointing out that the large share of schools in the U.S. and worldwide have opened with minimal in-school spread while using such precautions. So if we're following home safety protocols that we have in place, um, which we are, I, I, I'm continuously impressed by even the little ones keeping their masks on in kindergarten, and the pleasure of teaching in kindergarten class a few times, and it's, it's become the norm for our students, and they are used to it, and they keep their masks on. Um, and then we, the data has not shown, just like our data has not shown, that COVID has spread within our classrooms and within the walls of our schools. The data suggests that these precautions, especially masks, um, the risk of in-school transmission is very low for both children and adults. And these are some of the quotes, you can read them yourself, I'm not going to read them all, and this power point will be up our mind if we need to see, but the dean of the Chicago Medical School, um, the Associate Professor of Pediatric Infectious Diseases. Um, it's never going to be a hundred percent risk free, we know that, but we know that when more people are vaccinated, and we don't know our numbers yet, uh, of, of the staff and faculty in our school districts who are vaccinated, but we know a lot of people have received the vaccine, it is much more readily available, and that will decrease the risk and the prevention of transmission. So these are all good signs. There are some risks in everything we do, and teachers are not at higher risk than other essential workers. People who are in the supermarket, people who are in other, uh, who have other jobs, some jobs from hospitals, obviously they are at the highest risk because they're treating sick people, but every time we go to a gas station, or we go into a supermarket, or a department store, um, if we have to, many of us avoid those places, but those, uh, people are also at risk, and unfortunately, some of them are not even entitled to vaccine yet. I feel very fortunate to have been able to become vaccinated. Um, you know, there's a, a thought, um, one thought here that we need to trust the science more. Um, people should be trusting, we need to trust the medical professionals and the public health experts who have dedicated their careers to taking on these exact issues. I completely support that, and the science is clear, kids are suffering, families are suffering, trying to navigate as workers, parents, teachers, psychologists, and social workers, all simultaneously. We need to share that responsibility with our families. Mental health crisis caused by school closing will be a worse pandemic than COVID. We know that suicide, uh, suicidal elimination is on the rise, uh, suicides, attempted suicides are on the rise, and this is really frankly, it's terrifying. We need to have eyes on our kids so that they are with us every day, and they feel supported and connected and engaged. And of course, a well-rounded and typical education is what we're used to is essential for child health and development. Um, very young children in elementary school age are not a driving force in community spread of COVID, non-mask, non-distance adults gathering indoors. So, um. I'm sorry, right. So I'm going to turn it over to this tech who's going to continue, uh, with our presentation.
Good evening. Um, this is, as we said, a, um, a long time coming. We are in reviewing, we've been in this process for a year. Um, obviously, a lot has changed during that time, um, and we are continuing to evaluate and pose possible changes for the future as we go. Um, so why not? So we know that there are lower rates of infection, um, and we of course know that there are greater increases in the administration of vaccine. Um, we also know that if we make success for the overseas surrounding districts, we'll be talking about some of those. Um, the national research indicates, as we said, that there is minimal transmission in schools. We have been monitoring how it was very closely. The health and safety of everybody's social ability is the most important thing. Um, and that needs to be set over and working. We have never raved from that priority, um, all of our decision making, all of our planning, um, keeps everybody's health and safety at the forefront. Um, we do know that there are concerns about students not being in school, the challenges that that has created, the challenges it creates for students who are in school, that is in classroom, you know, in some of our primary classes, it's been talked about, it's just like a grade level model, something they look like and very hard to develop, um, in the future. But there are concerns with students not being in school, some students. We know also with climbing, um, some students have been able to manage a schedule well on a hybrid schedule, some students are able to manage a schedule well on fully remote schedule. Um, there is a ton of learners that have the skill set, they have the, where to do that, and, and that's the challenge, partly the challenge, say, of this whole process is that there is not one system or one way that has worked well before works well for everybody. Um, I have to say, in my thirty plus year career, in basically different times and different places at different times, I don't think we've ever addressed a situation like this, that's so layered, with so much emotion, with so much, um, upheaval in terms of structure, and, and so there are several things to consider. Um, but by and large, we need to create a plan, we need to have enough students to return to school onsite daily, uh, all students, and, um, as we've said before, not in one fell swoop necessarily, but in a thoughtful, thought-out, planned process, um, to ensure that we are prepared for it, that this management is prepared to set up for it, to ensure we're going to solve the safety, and also for the students' transition are prepared in that way. Um, similarly, you know, these are some of the current CDC guidelines, I'm not going to read them, they will be up on the website. Um, something that this Rockaway does very, very well is come together with the community, and this is not just something about the schools, I mean, we had to talk about that, it's about family decisions, it's about community decisions, it's about everyday decisions that are made to ensure that everybody is safe. And there's also a lot of data to show that at this point, um, we are in position to hopefully plan to move forward. Um, it's recommended that, you know, our learning models are dependent upon the level of transmission we can. We'll share that down in a few minutes, but we've been below five percent in Nassau County for the last number of weeks, and we keep an eye on that. We, we're sure that we're looking at all of the, the data points to make sure that there's other decisions. Um, schools should be prioritized for the youth, and remaining in personal construction. There are lower incidence of COVID nineteen among young children compared to teenagers, and less risk of in-school transmission due to in-person medical students. And so again, keeping an eye on that, and we're also keeping an eye on our numbers and our rates of transmission and how we, um, think and know students or others are planning. So, um, there is evidence to suggest that kids are in person in schools, and he is not a primary driver of community participation, at least that, you know, it's not just, you know, in Rockaway, but in the surrounding areas. And again, it's a community participation, so we look at that. So the seven day passivity rate, as I just mentioned, for the last few weeks, this week, the last seven days, it's been four point five percent, Nassau County, four point one percent in Suffolk, and the two weeks prior, you can see four percent in both, and four point four and four point three will be two weeks ago. These are just some numbers, um, to give an idea of what other districts in Nassau County are doing. Um, currently, there are thirty four elementary schools that are all in, many of them have been all in, uh, either from the beginning of school or, or a bit now, um, and there's one additional with a plan to change, um, now as we move over. Middle schools, fourteen are all in, five have plans to change, um, and we do know that there are fewer high schools all in for a lot of reasons, uh, student movement, the, the challenges of the high school setting, um, twelve or more are planning at this time, so they're getting close to catching up with, um, the other one.
So you mentioned the, um, promote percentage?
Yes, so we also found from other districts in Nassau County, um, the range of fully remote students, and I'll share hours in a minute, but there's a low end of five percent students who are fully remote in the district of Midgard and City to up to fifty five percent of, um, the district's enrollment, who's, who are fully remote students. When we talk about some of our, you know, thoughts in moving forward, proposal at this point, um, we are continuing to consider and respect that choice of a fully remote option for those families who chose that. So just so everybody knows where we are right now and what our need to be as we transition with that meeting, um, K to three, right now, we have a number of classrooms that, due to enrollment and class size, classroom size, are able to have all of our students in right now. Um, we do have some split classrooms, so the grade one at Rain, both of the grade one classrooms are split, we call it the satellite room, so the class is, um, all of our students are in the building, but they're split between two classrooms, and the teacher goes back and forth. And the challenges with that are similar to an older student in a hybrid setting, um, the learning is really difficult when it's done through a computer, even if you're in the same building, it's still not directly with that teacher. Second grade, we have one classroom at Rain and one classroom at Center that are also split, and at, um, Central Year One, third grade classroom, that is. So we are talking about, um, when we're talking about getting students back in, we're recording students who are split in the building, so combining those, um, classrooms that we get students in the building that they're not together in the classroom. In grade four through six, um, the students who are not fully remote, um, are on a hybrid schedule, and Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, which alternate Friday. Um, and as everybody, you know, understands the hybrid model, it's a difficult and challenging thing, um, for the students, for the families, and of course, for the classroom teacher who's managing, um, the onsite members and the people who are there. And then seven through twelve, we have a six day cycle, so there, students are in, um, two awards, two days in the building, two days remote, and following that six day cycle. So these are our numbers for fully remote. Um, again, you know, we, we continue and respect those family decisions, um, for that model, and right now, District Y, we have over all seventeen percent of our students, um, have chosen a full remote primary model. The numbers are very low, um, in our primary grades, and then you can see that they increase, and then some grades are margin. There's a list of, the full. There's a list of the fully remote number, the total number in the grade in that building, and then the percentage of remote learners at that grade or that building. So, this process, as I said, this is something that's been going on really since we opened school this year, we've been monitoring, we've been talking, we've been reflecting, we've been asking, you know, we've been really exploring how things are going, and then we've had to adjust at times depending on what's happening, and you know that we've had few, but sometimes closures, and other times, you know, informing of connections and contact tracing, and all of that that's been going on. But we did want to get specific feedback now to hear what people are thinking and feeling, and as I said earlier, this is probably one of the most layered decision-making processes because people are coming to this from different perspectives, different experiences, different fears, different emotions, different home environments, things that affect our school decisions unlike ever before. So, our faculty and staff survey, it's really split, and I'll show you that data in a moment, but we got a lot of feedback. So, we not only asked, you know, some yes or no questions, again, we'll share, but we also asked a lot of open-ended questions, and we received a lot of feedback, and we will continue to review that feedback because it's important, and there were a lot of trends. Overall, I think the biggest concerns, I know the biggest concerns that faculty and staff shared were about health and safety issues, for themselves individually, for their families at home, for their students in front of them, the families of the students, and the overwhelming concerns really have to do with the masks and distancing. We're going to continue wearing masks, because that would continue to be enforced if we bring more students into the buildings and into the classrooms. We have to make sure that that continues, that was clear. And the distancing, we would have to reduce distancing, so that is also a concern. Right now, a lot of people feel and know that what we're doing is working, it is working, and so, you know, upending that raises a lot of concern, and that's seen out loud and clear in the survey. Continuing protocols, same thing, I think there's a lot of appreciation and understanding that what we have in place right now is going well, and we have systems to address any issues as they come up, so that's not a current issue, but of course, when you're adding more people in the buildings and all the impact of that, you know, there's concern about that continuing forward. And then, also, you know, there was some feedback, let's wait for the vaccine for everybody. Well, let's not rush this, let's make sure every adult who can get the vaccines vaccinated before we even move forward. So, those were the concerns. On the other end, related to academics and social-emotional, it was overall Archie was the positive to come back. There was a lot of indication about the different challenges, as we've talked about for some time now, about the challenges of the remote learning models, different models, but they're all, you know, remote learning, regardless of the setting, is a challenge for many, many students and for the instructor, and we know that the instruction is not the way we create. We had students in our classrooms every day in front of teachers, and teachers, you know, who indicated that that was a challenge, and they wanted that because of that. And of course, the social-emotional, we talked about this barriers, social interaction, the importance of social interaction, the importance of the student-to-student relationship, the teacher-to-student, the student-to-teacher relationship and connection, and potential mental health concerns. And we're trying to address those things. Mr. Shaver will talk more about the high school activities that will be coming up, you know, we really focused on our student support staff and ensuring that they have opportunities to work directly with students, but it's still, you know, not the same, and it's very hard to assess when there's that broken instructional environment. So, here's some data, on a scale of one to five, being one of the least and five of the most, how safe do you feel coming to school if this is our faculty and staff response, there were thirty-six responses. And, you know, we understand that we're in an environment where there is risk and concern, but the majority of responses were positive, that they do feel that the school environment is a safe place to be. And the next one, where it's split, is would you feel comfortable bringing back more students on a full-time basis? And this is the one thing to say, the definitive yes or no, and we get that, and that's why we asked for a lot of other feedback and a lot of input related to specific concerns, what's working, what's not, you know, what could we do better, what social-emotional opportunities can we provide students? But you can see there's a little bit of a tip toward bringing more students back, as I said, it's a tough one to say, a yes or a no definitively. We also received a lot of response from our families, we have over more than four hundred responses from our parent survey, which was open last week through the weekend until yesterday, actually probably today, and the larger majority of parents, I'm sure that's out in a moment, support returning students to school. They echoed a lot of the concerns, making sure everybody's mask, making sure there's distancing when possible, you know, making sure that we are doing what we've been doing and providing a safe, healthy environment for everybody as best we can. But they also shared the challenges of learning remotely, the difficulty children were having, managing schedules, keeping up with the understanding of learning, asking questions from teachers when they're not in the classroom, not having an opportunity to have that same interaction. Some of them talked about successful routines, that their children are doing okay, and that's good, and we're happy to hear that, you know, we don't want everybody to be struggling with this, we're very happy, we think we've worked things through so that any students are okay in this, and that's a good thing. But overwhelmingly, the response was students need to be in school, and we've heard that from responses like, "Enough, get them back," to, you know, "When do you think they should return?" "Yesterday, last month," you know, it was a very clear message, "Yes, students need to be back to school," and again, we know that, and we're doing this hopefully in a very thoughtful manner. We know it's a challenge, and I hope everybody knows that we know that. And social-emotional, these students need to gather, be together, same things, they want children to have opportunities to interact, to interact with their teachers, to have the school experience, and to not miss out on board, and they've already missed out on. So, here's the data from the parent survey, and, you know, it speaks for itself, and we did all, you know, speak to bringing back more students full-time, in-person learning with installation of barriers, when we have to reduce them to six feet, as we've talked about many times, there would be the installation of barriers, because it's clear, we'll speak about that in a few minutes, and there would be the option to remain on, remaining on fully remote learning if they've chosen. So, let me turn this over to Mr. Shaver, he's going to speak about some high school information and the student survey that was in question.
Good evening. Feels better to take that off. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about some information about what our students have told us based on an SCL activity that the middle school conducted, and based on a student survey that we gave to all our students last week. But I'm going to begin with just a little bit of information about what's going on within the school. Obviously, extracurricular activities are, we know, very important normally, but especially important in the current environment, and, you know, I guess we should have all envisioned us being here in March, having been, having continued in the model, but I'm not sure we all really expected to be sitting here, maybe we all kind of thought things would go back to them a little sooner. So, you know, the first couple of months of school, we were all getting our feedback and trying to just hold things together, then we realized we really need to move on our extracurricular activities, and I'm going to very much credit our club advisors, our grade advisors, for really moving and pivoting and running fast with all their clubs and activities, because it's been increasingly difficult, A, to get students engaged, B, to figure out what to actually do with them that's safe and they would find enjoyable, but we have accomplished a lot in short amount of time. So, just an update on Rock Rivalry, Rock Rivalry twenty-two, twenty-one version, it has begun, we started with volleyball on Saturday, we had a great turnout, we will have Quiz Bowl, and it's fourth down on the twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth, they will be a COVID versions of both of those events, and credit to our, our grade advisors, our overall chairperson, Ms. Ferencru, and our student chairpeople, for really, we start talking about this way back in November, what are we going to do with Rock Rivalry this year, and they came up with some amazing alternatives for the year, for this year, including art interpretation, which apparently is bringing back an old goodie, but it fits perfectly this year, hallway decorating instead of backdrop, and a virtual entrance. So, a lot of the spirit of Rock Rivalry will continue in a very safe, modified way, and all of the activities have been modified to ensure obviously safety first, and it does allow even full-remote students to participate. For example, some of the art interpretation can be done on an individual basis, so a student who is full-remote at home can work on contributing to their grade, and we're very excited about that. Extracurricular activities, the vast majority of our extracurricular activities are running this year, those are the clubs that are active. I do have a summary sheet, which I left in my office, I'll go and grab it after I'm done here, that kind of details what each of the clubs have been doing, but they have been going at full speed ahead from the beginning. Some of the, some of the highlights are, the art club is actually looking to beautify the building, and they've already started putting up some quotes around the building, they're going to focus on whether you guys, one more, about creating murals for the building. Our builders club and key club have done a lot of community service safely within the community. The key club raised over three thousand dollars for going in the QBS society, and I'm blanking on the other charity, but they've raised over three thousand dollars for charity, our junior senior honor societies, instead of the service requirements that are required for those students, have pivoted to service learning projects, and we're going to possibly do a presentation with our students presenting on our service learning projects later in the year. Our mock trial team is two and one, and they have advanced to the next round, so they will, their season has not ended. DECA, it's all new, proper students, new advisor, we just found out that they top, they placed three teams top, placed in the top ten in their categories, they, in the states, they didn't advance to the finals, so the nationals, but for year one, they did very well. So, a lot of these, a lot of the activities that would be going on in the early, are going on, which is amazing. A few clubs are being active, not necessarily based on COVID restrictions, a couple of them were just based on staff commitments, and we weren't able to run them, but we're looking to bring them back next year, but the vast majority of our clubs are running. And what's also very important is our Class of 2021, activities are ongoing for the Class of 2021. Our grade advisors, Ms. Beth and Ms. Castellano, have worked very hard with the grade officers to try and figure out how to honor this class. You know, last year, when we honored the Class of 2020, we hadn't seen them at all for months before May and June. This year, we at least have the advantage of seeing them on a semi-regular basis, so we have kept some of what we did last year and created a couple of new things for this year. The Adopt a Senior program is a carryover from last year, which is very popular, and I thank all our community who has adopted a senior. They're looking to work with Mr. Barton, plan a senior Saturday, where the seniors can come into the building and go through a variety of different activities, whether athletics in the gym, cooking in the home career room, and possibly figure out a way to have, or they won't have dinner together that night. Senior Day, which is a tradition, where they shadow a faculty member of their choice, so a lot of these senior activities will keep going. We do have confirmation now that we can have a senior banquet, no problem, just a banquet, only our seniors, no outside guests, no students from other grades, the Stewart Manor Company Club has given us their regulations, and we're actually going to plan a separate junior banquet for the junior class, normally it's a joint to new senior prom, but just to keep the numbers low, to keep everyone safe, we're going to do two separate events on two different nights at two different venues, and we'll see what the actual restrictions are by the time June comes around. But we can actually have the event without testing all of the students, unless we want to change some things, then we would have to test the students that have arrived, but right now, the plans are go, and graduation is planned for June twenty-fifth. Obviously, not have, being able to use the auditorium, not actually having the field to do graduation on, it's become a little bit of an issue, but we are in contact with the town, and possibly to have two separate ceremonies at Memorial Park. So, hopefully that pans out, uh, Village, Village, sorry, the Village, so hopefully that will pan out, and if the regulations loosen by then, then maybe we can actually do one together ceremony. So, that's what's been going on, which leads us to what our students are actually saying. So, I credit this turnover in the middle school team, but a couple of weeks ago, they did an SCL activity where students read an article, watched a video, and then were asked to reflect about what they wish we knew about how the pandemic is impacting them. And this really allowed teachers, and this turnover has gone over these results with the middle school teachers, it allows teachers, administrators, and support staff to know what their life has really been like over the last year or so, as a student and just personally. So, there are three consistent themes within the responses, and you can see up there that they've been grouped into technological, academic, and social-emotional, and, you know, I think this is, I think it's very telling to us, I don't think it comes as a really surprise to us, until you start drilling down to our actual quotes, which I'm not going to go into now, but there are a lot of things that are continually weighing on our students, and these are, at least in this building, the youngest students that we have, and the least independent students we have. So, you know, whether it's from just being on the screen too much, to not being able to see their friends on a consistent basis, there is a lot that's weighing on them, and obviously, this is going to impact their academic and social-emotional health. So, a lot of these things we've been hearing, and we've addressed along the way, and we have plans to address them within the building moving forward. We also gave a student survey, and we, based on whether the student was full live, full remote, or hybrid, it changed questions a little, but a lot of this information is powerful. Basically, do you feel safe in the school? It's about our full live students who are here every day, so overwhelmingly, our students feel safe, and that was a theme. Do you feel that being in school every day was a benefit to you? Ninety-five percent of our students who are in school every day said that they felt that being in every day was a benefit. Now, these students didn't start the year here every day, they, with our email students, our inclusion students in grade seven through nine, and a few other populations, we brought back full live about a month and a half into the school year. And would you still feel comfortable coming to school every day if more students were beginning to come to school every day? And sixty-five percent of the students said yes, thirty percent were unsure, and a small number of students. Our full virtual students, now, they, these numbers are a little misleading, because actually, this was the art lowest response rate was with our full virtual students, but they were asked, is learning as a full virtual student more or less difficult, or the same as the past? Thirty, about thirty percent said it's more difficult, the rest said it's either, either as easier or as the same as the past, and if given the choice, the vast majority of them said they would stay full remote for the rest of the year. Our hybrid students, we had the best response rate, ninety-one percent of them said they feel safe coming to school on a daily basis, learning as a hybrid student, fifty-two percent said it's harder than in the past, and would you still feel comfortable coming to school for in-person learning if more students were in your classes? And, I have to go with that, but sixty percent said they would, and twenty-four percent were unsure. So, that's the data that we have at this point, there are, there is a lot more with the student survey that we will drill down to, to look at what specifically they said, because they were, there were a bunch of open-ended questions that we asked, so we'll continue to go through their responses to see what else we can do to support those students. And that's the end of my slides.
And Mr. Shaver, Mrs. Creo, if you could just come up and speak.
Mrs. Creo, if you could just come out and speak to what things look like right now in the classroom and what they would look like with more students in the middle of this.
Okay. So now that we've got all our data, let's talk about our facilities and how we're going to meet practical needs under the guidelines that we've been given. And I'll go back to the summer. In the summer, we were kind of really unsure what guidelines will specifically meant because it's typically given to school districts. They weren't really clear. They told us we needed masks. They told us we needed six-foot distancing. They didn't necessarily say exactly what six-foot distance we meant. There were many, many questions from facilities directors and myself and my organization as to what does that mean? Are we talking six-foot distance between desks? Are we talking six-foot distance between chairs? What exactly is that? Is there six-foot distancing on center, which is another thought process? Meaning, from the center of the desk, of one desk, to the center of the desk next to them? Is that what six foot meant? And so many school districts felt that that was the understanding, that it was six foot on center. I could see that that possibly was what it was saying, but it wasn't clear. And I could not get a response one way or the other. So here, in each hallway, we decided to go the safe route. We went six foot desk to desk, front to back. Because our concern was, what if it wasn't? And we went six foot on center? And then we opened up the school and found out that we were not following the guidelines. It is our responsibility as the administrators here and health and safety of the students in this building. We must follow the guidelines. So we took the safe way out. Plus, shortly after we did it, we found out that we actually were using a larger distance than necessary. Not a bad thing, but it was an extremely difficult challenge. How are we going to accommodate our students with these guidelines? So I have three different methods that we implemented. And this took us hours and hours and hours of thought. Ms. Delly and I, we moved desks, we sat in classrooms, we spoke to each other, we was grueling. We were here all the battles of the days and nights over the summer to try to figure out how can we do this in the most safe way for our students? So what you see here is two methods. We are currently using three. I have two here, because these are the two that we will mainly use. Over here on this side, you see the two side-by-side desks. I don't know if you can tell, but there's a shield in between that protects, it's a barrier. So the two desks can be side by side, and there's a barrier there between students. The aisles are separated by six feet. This is the, we designed this on our own. We did not purchase this. We designed it and our facility staff and maintenance crew actually determined how to secure those shields. Because we felt this kept the children safe. On the far corner, you see another custom design that we made. We are currently using these in the high school cafeteria. We needed a very large capacity in the high school cafeteria. We have a lot of children scheduled to eat. So what we did there is we used the desks that are in the high school, the junior and senior high school. They are one-piece desks. And we had custom ordered three-piece shields that went across the front of the surface and down along the side of the students' chair. And then those of you who have attended many of these conversations, you have heard me say over and over and over again that shields that are sitting on the desk, unless your child wants to sit on the desk, is not protecting or keeping a barrier between the students that sit in with chairs. And, you know, we took that very seriously. So we designed those. I had them custom fabricated so that we knew. And if we put them closer than six feet from side to side or back to back, your child is fully enclosed by a barrier. They've been very successful. You know, we were hesitant, we always hesitate, you know, something could be designed. How is it going to work? Is it going to break? Is it going to be strong? I remember in the high school, during the high school cafeteria, none of them have broken, none of them have come off the desks. It's been pretty amazing. Our children are pretty amazing. They treat everything professionally. But the fact that none of them are full on, you get a lot of credit to the design and the advocate. So what are we going to do going forward? We need to bring more children into the school. So we need to reduce our distancing between our desks. So what is the best way to do that? In the elementary building, we will maintain the setups that are over here, two desks and the shield in between. There is going to be some classrooms in which I will not be able to maintain six feet on center. So the district will go to six feet on center without barriers, which is the guidelines. But when we can't do six foot on center, we will need to have a barrier. So in this particular situation, we may need to put a barrier on the surface of the desk so that front and back is protected. In a lot of our classrooms, I will need to do this on the front row because to keep a distance between the student, like the child and the teacher's desk. And that has been expressed to me by many people here in the district, that the teachers, they feel more comfortable if they had that extra six feet. Although it's not required, that's the comfort level. I understand that, we understand that. We will take the necessary steps to protect them. Anybody who's been here over the last year, the teachers have seen me in and out of the classrooms since the start of school. I'm constantly in there pushing children's desks around, looking at what are we going to do when the guidelines loosen up? What are we going to do if the virus starts, the infection rate starts to decrease? How are we going to bring children back? And this is then ongoing process that Ms. Delly and I have been doing since the beginning of school. Although we are not talking about actually implementing that. We had to start to think about it. I mean, we couldn't just think about it last week. We had to start to say, well, how can you do this, Mrs. Creo? Is it possible? Are our children and our staff going to be safe? And so we have spent months looking at this. So our goal is we will stick with this setup in the elementary buildings. And in the junior, senior, and high school, we will be using more of the three-sided, custom-made fabricated cheetos. That will protect our students on all sides. It will allow us to have our aisles a lot closer and still be the protection, front and back and side, as recommended. So what is the other things we think of? Cleaning. Cleaning has been a significant challenge here in the school district. We have done everything possible to try to limit the cost to the taxpayer. Hiring personnel is a recurring cost to the taxpayer. But we give a lot of thought to that as well. We've been using our attendments during the day. They have been extremely accommodated. I give them a shout out because this is outside of their job duties. But they were willing to do it. They stepped up to the plate. Our maintenance guys have stepped up to the plate. Our stewardesses have stepped it up. There's a lot more regulations and requirements on the staff. Yet they've managed to accommodate it. We've altered shifts in the morning. We've brought some of our head of study into it earlier to finish shelling the cleaning. Because all of our instructional areas are fogged on a nightly basis. It's a two-person process and it's time-consuming. So the staff really stepped up to the plate and really put a lot of effort into making sure our students are safe. If we increase our capacity, we will need to increase our staffing. Because right now, we are maxed out. So our faculty will be probably hiring some staffs to work each night to address the additional shields. Anybody who's walking around this district on a regular basis, those shields are beautiful. They're spotless. Those guys are cleaning those shields. They're doing a really good job, but they did very seriously. And so I'm confident that if we were to bring more students back in, our students will be safe. We had a plan in place, we should live to remake the mission forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Creo. So clearly, as we keep saying, there is a lot to consider. The physical plant, the health and safety, the instructional program. The decision will not obviously be made lightly, but we're sharing as much information, as much data, and as much perspectives as we can. So I have here a proposal for a timeframe just to, if you're like me, kind of need to see something in a plan to make, have a big sense. So we're looking at an upcoming spring vacation. We would not recommend doing anything prior to that. There's a lot, again, of the physical plant alone that would have to be addressed before we even are able to bring more students back into the building. And so there's a lot of things that have to be put in place. And then again, all the transition and ways to students returning. But if we were to do this after the April vacation to provide an opportunity before the school year end to have everybody return and participate in more typical school year for the remainder of the year. April 12th is the second week we return after the break. So allowing for that first week, letting the dust settle after the vacation. If we were to return and were able to combine those classrooms that we talked about earlier that are split within the buildings right now, look at fourth grade at the elementary building possibly, and look at the middle school seventh and eighth grades initially. There will be a lot of transition activities for those students certainly coming into middle school, seventh grade for the first time. Then allowing a two-week settlement period where we can monitor the situation. We can see if there are any issues that we did not anticipate, address anything that might come up. And then look at bringing that other grades during that week of April 26th perhaps. Similarly, we have a couple of weeks of transition, adjustment, monitoring, and then have everybody in by early in May potentially. With two options of fully, full daily in-person onsite learning option or the current full remote option. So we would be eliminating the hybrid and eliminating the split classrooms at the elementary centers. These are some of the things that would be and have been a priority for us as we continue to explore this possibility and what this could possibly look like before the end of the school year. As we've just shared, additional barriers, reducing distance, there's no question that we could look at, install additional barriers. Maintaining all safety protocols, that has been our priority from the beginning. There's no question that that would continue to be the priority. Adjusting speed and sanitizing protocols to address that increased student population and built-in the cleaning, the maintenance, the management of that. Again, none of this is just easy, quick, okay, let's bring them back next week. There's a lot of planning and there's a lot of management again of the plant in order to make it happen in a safe and healthy way. Continued vigilance with contact tracing with the eventual positive cases. We do know that COVID still exists and that we have to manage that and we monitor that. And we, of course, would continue with those protocols in place. We, again, don't know the number of adults who are vaccinated. Anecdotally, we do know that there are a number of adults within our schools that have been able to receive the vaccines. And I know superintendent is exploring ways to get restricted to participate in that. The consultation, getting more vaccinations to those who need and want them. And then analyzing the environmental considerations that would be impacted by these changes. So the next steps, obviously, this is speaking before the patient first, that is, to find what the direction will be, meeting with families, step, education is incredibly important. And as much as we try to do that, we know that it's always a challenge and we continue to work on that. Organizing the physical plant, again, we want to make sure that the environment is set up in a way that is secure and safe and provides the status of possible return for all students and for everybody else who's in the building, of course. And planning the student return to daily onsite instruction. That's going to be an adjustment for many of our students. And we know that, and so we will have to address that, just the welcoming of students back, the interaction opportunities, the getting to know you opportunities for students to have met one another. But also the management of the schedule. The students, that will be a transition and that will be a change. And change in conditions like that, you know, will be challenging, especially at this point in the school year. So we'll be addressing those developments to be appropriate. And then a district-wide parent form, because obviously we want everybody informed and continue to have dialogue and feedback and monitor and develop. So as we talked about earlier, this is a process that's been pre-planned for, for quite a while. And now we're kind of moving into that next phase of possibly planning for an actual teacher. That is where we are. There was a lot of presentation, there was a lot we wanted to share, there were a lot of considerations. And we're taking this very carefully and promptly. So thank you for your time. Any questions for the board? If you want to, let's go back.
Okay, thank you everyone for attending this evening. And you know, normally in a board session, the board now will discuss what we just saw, will ask questions from our administrators. But I just want to deviate because COVID is so much different than everything else. We had some people in the audience tonight, okay? And if you have any questions that you would like to address at us right now before we start, you know, start our session? Everybody's good at this. Okay, good. Thank you for that. So the board, you know, we saw it for the first time tonight. Any questions that you have that we should, you know, look at and discuss and direct?
I think the timeline is something that we should try to push ourselves into. Do the best we can and know what's, we have to be very thoughtful and understand that we don't want to be hasty and make mistakes. But I think at the same time, at least the elementary portion of the district, we should consider letting them, in my opinion, we should consider getting them back sooner than later. And then, and then obviously the transition to middle school and high school. But I think the younger students are probably the ones that we really need to be back when we, like, as soon as possible. Obviously, moving from safety protocols and everything else. I mean, from the, from the parents and many of the people I've been speaking to prior to this specific meeting in, you know, in our town. They want, they want their elementary kids, their elementary school children back. And this is from like very difficult groups of people. And most of them, quite honestly, aren't even my friends. They're just people I see out there in New York. They're just people I see out there in New York. That's the one thing I've heard from multiple, local parents in the district. They want their elementary kids back as soon as possible. So just again, going back into that timeline. If there's a way we can move a little quicker, maintaining safety, I think it would be in our kids' best interest at this point. We've done a great job as a district, maintaining safety protocols to six feet and everything else. We've been very successful at that. I don't see why we couldn't do it a little bit quicker to get the kids back. We leave them with, what, one month of traditional school? Juniors and seniors. Right. We leave the juniors and seniors with one month of traditional school. If there was a way to move quicker, I think it would be in our children's, I like to say, best interest. Again, I'm not a doctor. I'm not a employer. But it would be great to see them get back and get as much time as we possibly can without any issue and doing it the right way. Just let's try to move that timeline a little bit quicker if possible.
So I think just one of the factors are ordering the barriers. And I know Mrs. Spreo has been working on that. We have that ready to go, to move forward with. That is probably the first concern, you know, that we turn to the timeline. Well, we have the money. We're able to pay for them. You know, we are getting back the money from the hammer instead, which covers all of the COVID expenses we've had so far. So that's great. And the money is not the issue. It's the time to have them fabricated. So as soon as we can get that fabrication. And then, you know, the other consideration was to allow people time to get vaccinated. And so we hope that, I've been in touch with Mount Sinai, South Shore Hospital. We had been on a list waiting to connect with them, to partner with them so that they would vaccinate anyone who is not yet vaccinated. And hopefully, March 16th, they are going to allow us to have our teachers. We would make the appointments for the teachers and send them over a spreadsheet. And then all our teachers could, when staff were not yet vaccinated, wanted to be, would be able to be vaccinated there now. Those were two factors that we looked at. So.
It makes a lot of sense.
If we can move those things along, we certainly can.
I also, in terms of surveys, and it was amazing to see how many parents in the district, you know, took part in that survey.
Probably large response we have.
Maybe, just throwing it out there, maybe we do another survey to see how parents feel about spending the time and money in trying to fabricate these new barriers. Just get an idea of, do they feel that the barriers are 100% necessary at this point? Just out of curiosity.
What I'm thinking about there too is, do I make sure that teachers feel comfortable?
Well, yeah, I was sure.
I think that's maybe.
Well, you asked, I mean, ask everyone to see how.
Well, actually, the guidelines from New York State say we have to be six feet apart or have a barrier. So we can't be flexible on the barriers. Yeah, we have to have them. They don't say how far you have the barriers have to be, but they say six feet, and when six feet is not possible, a barrier.
One question, piggybacking with the elementary school. We would bring back fourth grade, off to fourth grade, then seven and eight, then two weeks later, five and six, and then so on. Why don't we bring elementary back first? Is that not overwhelming the buildings? Or why wouldn't we go up to sixth grade, first round, and then bring seven, eight, nine, 10 back the second round?
Well, I think that the data and the information we've had from our seventh and eighth grade students is pretty compelling. And because the fabrication of the barriers is going to take time, we expect we'll get them in. We don't want to wait to get them all in, to place a large order and get them all in. So as they come in, we'll be able to move and install, because we have to install them. And that's another kind of barrier is the manpower to get those put in. We'll do it at night. We'll do it on the weekend, which will be over time, but we can cover that. And we really felt compelled, this is Terranova, Mr. Shaker. You know, our administrators have been really, particularly involved in these decisions. And we're very concerned about their well-being. I know, as you say, I think you expressed concern as well about, you know, the well-being of our seventh and eighth grade. They're our most vulnerable age group. And so, you know, friends are really hard for them to make. Some of them have expressed being very lonely, not having any friends. And so we're very concerned about, probably most concerned about the seventh and eighth grade. So again, a lot of thought and a lot of, we discussed this many times over the last couple of weeks with the administrative team and considered many different options. And that's what we came up with. I think we, you know, certainly can be revised, but I think the principals made some recommendations.
That's what we needed. We're just wondering why.
On the topic of the barriers, you know, and to do this, everybody, we made our own, went out there. That was in the beginning. Now, we have a lot of other examples of barriers in school districts that are out there. Many of them a lot quicker to be had in getting them over here. You know, did we research that? And what is the timeframe for that? Because we started talking about this, as we've all had, every month on the board meet. And we said that we're gearing toward coming back all this while. And I would hate to see us be hung up a month waiting for barriers. You know, when the other districts have the barriers in, we're ready to go. You know, the two-week visit is so long to me to see 11th and 12th grades coming back in May. I'm sort of looking, I'm saying to myself, oh, boy. 12th grader coming back, you know, in May, what is it always going to look like? Mr. Shaker, good luck there, on some of those 12th grades being in the building for the first time of the year. It just seems like it's very counterproductive to everything we talked about. We've talked about so many wonderful, wonderful things before. Our guiding principles, the social, emotional well-being, the academic outcomes, you know? All of those six areas were so important. Well done on that presentation. Well done. Because of that, I just think the timeline is way exaggerated. And I'd like to see something done a little faster, especially with the barriers.
Like, so I can let me speak because I want her to add a little bit anyhow to your comments earlier. Barriers will take, you're saying, about seven to 10 days once I place the order. You know, yes, I looked into many different kinds of barriers. Again, the majority of barriers that are being used by other school districts are strictly on the surface of the desk, natural side by side. And in our school district, we need, our classrooms are not large enough. We need to have less than six feet, six feet between the desks. So we need to have something on the side, right? The other issue is, a lot of the elementary desks are now here in the high school. So I need to get the high school barriers so that I can pull the elementary desks and put them back into the elementary schools. And what's different about now versus the summer is we don't have staging areas. We have staging areas in the summer. We're using those gymnasiums. We're using those little ones. We also have instructional materials, not necessarily here in the high school, but in the elementary buildings. Those classrooms are, a lot of stuff are in those classrooms. Children are all set up, teachers are all set up. So what we did when we last classes in June is we worked directly with the teachers and they were wonderful. They gave us, we told them this is what we planned. And they told us which students should sit where. And they labeled all of their supplies because they all have boxes. And we moved everything accordingly. So that when the teacher, the students returned after the break, the hall of the break, they were comfortable with what was there. So that would be the same process we would follow. And that was just sort of a draft timeline. I'm not saying that we can't do it, but, um, we have different, you know, getting everything out of storage and bringing it back, setting it up in hallways now, not gymnasiums, and then getting it into the classroom. I think here it will be easier. I think the elementaries will be a little bit more complicated. But I need to start here because I need to get my desks back so that I can do the elementary buildings. Because this is where the desks, all of the excess desks for the year bought this, this experience, they're here in the building right now. We don't have any.
We also need to order the flexible furniture that we're going to get, so.
Yeah, I haven't finished counting my desks. I'm still counting my desks. But, you know, that would also be another consideration. We may need to do some order.
A lot of the elementary classrooms had tables. So kids would be sitting and move the tables, which are really harder to create, to put barriers on. And so we now have desks in all of the elementary classrooms rather than tables. So it's shifting the furniture. And then we don't want to order more new desks just to, for this purpose. So we have been transitioning to what's called flexible furniture, the furniture that's in the library, because it's more user-friendly, it's better for kids. There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of research behind that. And Mr. Shaker was planning to purchase that, or the middle schooling. That would be the first group of rooms that would be changed into flexible furniture. So we're looking to see if that furniture would be suitable without ruining it to put, to order that, because we need more desks instead of tables. And so we have to see that we can order those so that we wouldn't be ordering regular desks and then not really supporting our vision for where we want our classrooms to look in the future. And those desks will support the barriers.
And that's my particular reason why I asked that question about the barriers. Because I've been in places now and seeing different barriers. The fold-out ones, you can fold out three quarters racks and students have to bear with work. There are a bunch of different ones. So I would just like us to make sure that we're looking in totally about the various types of barriers.
Yeah.
As we've done in the cafeteria, okay, which is the back and front and the sides. We'll put it right there. Okay, that can be used so that we can speed up the process a little bit. But let me not kid anybody here. It's not about speeding up. It's about doing it in the right manner. And we all talked about that before. I'm one who just hates to say that, well, wait, wait, wait. You know what? We've been talking about this. We know where we're moving with this. We knew that the money had gotten in from, you know, town and, right.
No, we all.
We'll get money back. And we know we have to, you know, go out and protect everybody here. Okay, because our first mission, as we all have stated tonight, and we've stated this time and again, our commodities are our teachers, they're our administrators, they are our students, they are our parents when they go home. This is our village and we want to protect everybody. So in doing it, I would just like to see that the timeline, we could look into that a little bit better. It just seems like it's a little too long. If we could meet the other clearances. My other question would have been is the roster sizes. And I'm sure that your administrators are looking at the roster sizes from the beginning of the year to where they are now. Because there may be roster sizes that might be oversized depending upon what happened with the hybrid, who's coming in, who is at home. We might have, you know, they have to be adjusted. I'm sure, I'm sure that takes time, you know, to do in the system that we have. So that was one thing on my mind to make sure I got out there tonight. I've been looking through that. And the additional cleaners, like we said from the beginning, we need to hire, right? Because our outdoor guys now are going back outdoors.
They're all outdoors.
They need to be outdoors and they're going to be indoors. So, you know, we, the board, the first time, run the ads, run them again, run them again in all papers.
We have hired a few over the last couple of months. So I think we're in a much better position now than we were. More people are going now. See, a lot of the people that came and interviewed for us in the summer or early fall ended up pulling. They got hired and then they chose not to. We did get a few more recently. We actually have one on agenda this week. So we have more than we had when we started the school year. I think people are being a little bit more comfortable coming back into the environment, doing the cleaning. And, you know, as someone who understands the timeline issue and the fabrication issue, we didn't want to pull the trigger and do any orders until we really discussed this.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I do one question. Will the district be prepared, if necessary, to do the gap for the hybrid environment? Because.
Yes. We, you know, we don't think that it's necessary to maintain remodels. We really feel that people are coming back. They need to commit. We will ask parents to commit. We may have some families who decide to go full remote and don't want to come back, and that's okay. But we're not going to have a hybrid. However, if the positivity rate, and that's why we gave a two-week gap between, because we do want to see what the impact is of bringing more students back. Rather than doing it every week where we wouldn't get a chance to see if there was any spread within the schools. So, you know, that is the reason for the two weeks. The reason, you know, we grappled a lot with the seniors. We know this year is important for the seniors. But we looked at the benefits for them, socially, emotionally, in terms of what they're missing out on. And Mr. Shaker, you know, has such great ideas with his team to create opportunities for our kids on the outside hours so that they will have the senior experience. We're going to do a lot of activities and things for them. And academically, they are probably the least in need of the time in school because they're about to graduate, they have their credits, they're doing well. We have a couple of kids who are shaky and we're going to do what we can to support those students in any other way we can. But academically, they are the least, the group, the grade that's least in need. Socially, I would say not social, emotional, but socially, they're the group that's in need of events and activities. And we're going to make sure they have those. But academically, they're the least in need. So we can leave that. And they're more independent. You know, the older kids are more independent and they are more able to learn. You know, we certainly, we looked at another, something else we looked at would be to bring back specific children who are very, who are really struggling, kids who are failing, who have done well before. So kids who had pretty solid or average academic performance and are failing in these subjects. Or kids who we know are really not doing well emotionally, their mental health is suffering. And we were concerned, can we do that? Can we pick and choose and bring a few kids back who need it? And we did that with our special ed or our ENL students because they had a classification that was different. We did find guidance, I did, found guidance, and I don't even know if I shared this with you, combing over this last night, that said, you can make decisions about bringing kids back into the kids who really have specific needs. Because, you know, we don't want parents to say, well, what about my kid? You know, how can we bring that child back? But if we can create criteria and rationale for students, we can, we're also going to look at that. Mr. Shaker already, and actually, has a list of students that guidance and his team has been generating. So we could invite those students back with feeling comfortable that it's the right thing to do because the guidance even speaks to it. So I think we need to do that as well. Because we don't want to wait that there's an 11th grader who's really struggling. If it's April, we maybe want to bring those students in now. And we can do that as well. So I think we're going to look at that. We talked, Mr. Shaker, I talked about it today.
That's another, that's another great jumpstart. That is terrific.
Yeah. And we were concerned whether it was the right, we were allowed to do it or somebody might challenge it legally.
It's good on you.
We actually can because the guidance speaks to it, you know?
So the one thing I've, and again, and I know I've beat this up a couple of times, but my thought always goes to, the more things we're doing with our kids, they're back in athletics, they're back in rock climbing, they're back in experiences that we want from that, from social, emotional. And as we all know, they're crossing over the lines. The barriers are being crossed over. And that's why, again, the more that they're not structured in a school day and the more time they can have outside the school day, it's going to lead to these kind of problems that we've been seeing around already, you know, coming back to the school. So that's the only reason why I keep saying that the timeframe, I think, I would like to see adjusted a little further. And I'm speaking for myself and I'm speaking for the guys as well. If you disagree, please let me know.
As long as it's done safely, as quickly as possible, great. As long as we're doing it safely for our children, our staff, 1000%.
And I think that the checking points that you mentioned before are so critical. Checking points meaning that there's a committee. Every week you're evaluating, you're watching, you're seeing the numbers, you're looking at this, and you're making intelligent decisions. Do we move this next phase in, or do we hold it off a little bit? You know, just because we have a timeline, that's what a timeline is called. It's a timeline. You want to make it, but again, it has to be meant because it makes sense and it's safer.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns or?
I only have one other question. In regard to the cafeteria and lunchtime, is more kids coming back to the cafeteria? What are the plans for lunchtime?
Well, we have, we will be able to increase the room right now from 54 things. We will really increase it to 72. We did have an overflow setup and two of the floor classrooms are set up in the middle school, which will have 28 desks in each cell.
Everything during the lunch period.
And it is a little challenging. We do have two guys who come in and clean. Mr. Schaefer has set it up. So the students will be moved out a little earlier than the end of the period. So the guys can come in and put those shields off so the next period can come in. It's a little challenging, but you've made it work.
The key is that juniors and seniors have gone out for lunch almost entirely, which has made things so much easier.
And we also thought about maybe getting some tents and playing. We don't have a field, but we can put some tents out on the front lawns. Kids can go out when they finish eating, maybe they could eat outside. Those would be other options that we would look into purchasing some tents that we could put up. They wouldn't be able to keep the classrooms because of the regulations, but certainly for lunch and for, you know, when they finish eating, they could, instead of coming in here, go outside. The lower floor couldn't go.
Okay, Jack, do you have the energy? You did much more.
Why not? We might as well, we might as well.
We'll go back out and you can pull screen down there or?
Yeah. I don't see, you guys see? There you go. So my budget presentation is much shorter. All right, so try my best to keep you guys all aware. So today we are going to just give you a quick update on the tax levy cap and then we're going to go with the expenditure review. So right now, as I had discussed last meeting, the CPI is set 1.23. As we've indicated several times, your tax cap is set on multiple variables. One is the same throughout the entire state of need off, actually 1.23. The rest of the variables unique to each district. So some districts you're going to see, I'm sure there needs to be a little bit of advertising to advertise them. Some school districts will be much higher than us, some districts will be lower. And that's because of the variables that go in. For the most part, we are pretty much set here unless there's some change to state aid formulas, which would impact my building aid. Building aid is again another unique variable. But that doesn't usually, the ratios that go into building aid doesn't usually change. So governor's proposal, when the state is budget is adopted, hopefully on April 1st, we keep our fees cost that we're on time this year. I think that we're pretty much set at 2.6. Please do not get nervous of the 2.6. At this point, if the state aid remains the way it is, we are not on 2.6. That is our cap. And that means that we can raise an additional 850,391 dollars towards funding the 2122 school year. So let's talk about transportation. So we have contract transportation that we use to add a district in private schools. We transport students to 16 different schools and 124 students. In district, we have four vehicles, the 2001 to 2002s and 2018 that we won a couple of years ago. We discussed last meeting that the proposal is to purchase a new bus so that we had a newer vehicle. Right now, our bus is a 2002. And it breaks down, we don't have a larger vehicle, we only have vans. So the proposal this year would be to purchase a brand new bus so that we have a backup. Should one of the, should the larger vehicle go down, since we do use it. And then we would surplus one, the 2001 seller. And only run the four vehicles, we would have 2002 vehicles would both be our backups. And then we have two large, a large vehicle, then 2018 then we'd be going. So here's our transportation costs. And last year I talked about a lot about how the transportation cost was spiraling. And you can see it going up, 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 up. And that's because there's a shortage of drivers. Some transportation companies were closing. And we were not lucky enough to renew our contract last year in the 1920 school year with the company that we had been using for many years and it was helping us reduce our prices. And that was because the company just couldn't acquire or hire, I don't know, drivers to meet the needs of all the districts that they were servicing. So East Rockaway was one of the school districts that unfortunately was not able to renew their contract. However, in the 2021 school year, we managed to get back renewed with them. And I would say 90%, with the exception of our Bosse's runs, is done with that same transportation provider. So we saw savings there. We also contracted special ed for our Bosse's students with Bosse's. We had been doing that through a social bidding. And it was costing us a lot more money. When I went into Bosse's, I realized that the district could save money, so we entered Bosse's. Group last year and that has saved us money as well. In addition, we did a contract with Limbrow. We have a couple of large combined routes. And we also have a round in which Malburn uses twice one or a couple of our students on their trip, on their district. So we did luck out this year. That transportation provider has already committed to renewing for next year. So I know that that is going, we are going to continue to see savings. Malburn has already committed to continuing to transport our students. And Limbrow has also committed to doing these routes. So we already have commitments from a lot of different types, four different methods that we've been using. So our procedure is we'll go down. I don't want to bring it down too much. We are using more vehicles in some areas because of the social distancing. Unfortunately, I can't put as many children on bus as I could a year and a half ago. That might, not next year, but I have to anticipate that it won't. Worst case scenario, we have extra money. As you can see, you see my little arrow over there? That's just because we did not pay all of our providers for three months of the year. So it looks a lot lower than it would have been if it would have been way up there and probably closer to $900,000 for the 1920 school year. Salaries and fringe benefits, as you can see, is $31 million. It's 75% of our overall budget. Again, you see that the 1920 is lower. And that's because there's a significant reduction due to the lack of sports supervision, lack of need for substitutes, advisors, supervisors. So the cost went down. That is not a real cost. It would have been much higher than that had we operated the boat though. 2021, our estimate was 30.5 million and we are only looking at 1.25 million, which is 2% of budget to budget. And that is that, including our benefits. Equipment. In the 2017, 18 school year, we decided to bring equipment that didn't need to be on the budget. We had no budget for equipment, which was a problem because we need equipment in school districts. So we used to try and use the capital funds to fund equipment or we just didn't buy it. So we did bring it back in 17, 18. We are trying to keep it at a level amount, give or take a little bit. So there is no financial impact each year. Sometimes it'll go up a little, go down a little, but you'll never see a drop like you saw in the 1920 school year. Again, in the 1920 school year, when the district closed, I froze all expenditures. So anticipating equipment was not allowed to be purchased, it wasn't an absolute necessity. And there really was no absolute necessities for equipment in spring when school was not running. So you see a significant drop. Where did that money go? That money went into fund balance. That's the money that we had set aside when we hopped because they talked and threatened to put out a federal state aid. The decision here in the school district was that we were not going to cut program or access any employees. We were going to maintain our program and do what's best for our children. And we were going to use our fund balance to make sure that that was not going to be a problem should we get a stadium. Supplies, textbooks, workbooks, I remind us again, textbook initiative is something that we did not have here. That was implemented in the 1920 school year. So now Tech has developed a textbook initiative plan so that we have a long term plan which subjects need to be replaced and we haven't planned that. So again, it's consistent, there's no peaks, highs and lows. And that's what you try to do when you do a budget. Try to plan long term and you try to plan so that it's pretty level. It's always going to go up a little here and there due to costs. But for the most part, we should try to have a relatively number of costs year to year. So that there was no real financial impact. This is going down, last year was a heavy one. A contractual is another big part of the budget. What is a contractual? I thought I'd list some of the key areas and just point out where some of the big increases are. You see, it's a 5% increase and that was like, wow, when you're young, 5% increase. Nobody does a 5% increase at these times. Well, security, we are a, it is a management system here in the district. We're in the process of working on that, we need support for that. So that and contractual increases for outside security staff is approximately $11,000. Liability, load, accident, still accidents doing pretty well, but the liability insurance has gone up, but insurance continues to go up. That's another $20,000 out of this 174. Our private placement tuition went up by $125,000. So students were moved from Bosse's placements, it's a private placement. And you'll see the Bosse's number went down, so it's kind of a wash. But I think it was important to point out because some of the wire would increase our budget by 5%. And then again, we have our utilities in here, our legal costs, our orders and any other contractual things that we allocate to. And they're all with us, no one chooses. We try to look for savings each year when we negotiate contracts or when we have accounts on savings. But there are some that we just, we just cannot avoid. Bosse's, so what is Bosse's? They provide us shared services. We use them for special education programs, professional training, technical support. We also have started using several years ago, using Bosse's for a lot of our hardware purchases. And that's because we get aid back. We also use it for leases for our hardware. We implemented this so that our costs would be significantly reduced. So special education is not Bosse's aid alone, that's some high cost aid. But all of our services and our hardware technology purchases, which we go into, that's what we just want to try to take advantage of the Bosse's aid. But here's our Bosse's budget. Again, we continue to maximize our budget. You'll see this is increased, is that decrease that I talked about, this $50,000 of the $125,000 that we shifted. We do continue to increase our purchases through Bosse's. We continue to roll out our technology plan, which we discussed last time. And we purchase at least more and more and we do it through Bosse's to allow us to get the state aid or Bosse's aid, which is state aid. But just to give you a little bit of example of what we do. Right now, Bosse's budget for the 2122 school year is $2.8 million. Of that, a million dollars is for special services, that's not Bosse's aid. Now this is the $1.8 million that's in this budget for Bosse's purchases and services. Our aid estimated is $800,000, which is a 44% return, meaning that we're not repaying 56% of the cost. So computers costing us 56% of what typically cost, having decided to go outside of the loan contract. So it is very advantageous, we try to maximize it. And this is, you know, just an example of just another method that we've put into place over the past several years. Bring back more money for the school district and lessen the cost for our taxpayers. Technology reserves, we discussed this last month. I need to review it again because at this point propositions will be advertised. They will be, this proposition is a second proposition on the budget vote. We used to have grade, we now have field. First one is the actual vote. And the second one is authorized use of the technology reserve for technology purposes. This will need to be advertised, so there will be a resolution next week to generate approval so that we can go out and advertise if that's required. So the other spending, we're proposing spending $170,000. We tried to put $100,000 a year into reserve, getting reserve funded if there was excess funds at the end of the year. This additional proposition, there's no cost in tax pay, it's money that's set aside for these specific purposes. We are not looking to wipe it out, we spent 170, we spent 170 last year. My goal was to reduce that so that this could accumulate for some larger projects going down the line, just like the year in the past. So that the tax pay is without a large bill. Fortunately, things have changed and it is not increasing. So we're ending the 170, still using the $30,000 for two different years, over $60,000 in our reserve for long term projects. What will we be doing with that? We will be purchasing 350. We will now be 100% of our bucks. We will go along with E D L tablets that were handed out from 101 initiative. We have a lot of problems with our tablets, they were constantly putting me down, constantly. So we started to shift over to 350 a couple of years ago. And now for the 2122 school year, all grades on the 101 initiative, all of that's hand complex. So we'll be consisting of 4. We'd be able to, it's a rouse, but that was a very important, everybody was on the same phone. So, as I said, it was rather easy and shocking today. Next week, we will be talking about district initiatives that are inside project planning. We'll be talking about the most important part of it is that it's the state and the revenues coming in. That will determine where we are with tax gap planning. Again, the revenue to state remains as it is. Today, we are not at 2.6%. We are much lower than that. And I hope that the state will increase if not, we will.
No, not many questions?
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Great job. Let's go.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. Yeah, I kid with Jackie, she has her retirement job when she's ready. Go around the districts around the county, do budget presentation. She's so good at it. Really makes it understandable for the lady, you know, and she does a great job every year. It just keeps her present and helpful. So thank you for that. Also, before we move on, before I ask the audience if they have any questions. So Mrs. Smith had one. She got called to a phone call and she said, I asked you now. Just a reason and a reminder is that commitment, are we going to be looking for commitment for parents? When you survey them to see who's coming back anyway?
Yes, we're going to ask parents really to sign something and commit. One of the, one of the interesting things in discussion with my colleagues, and this obviously is a constant topic, is that districts, and I agree with this. I thought it was a great idea, are really asking parents to commit to one or the other. Because we've had some flip-flopping where kids will be home and we've been kind of relaxed with it. Well, they haven't felt comfortable coming in for whatever reason. And so they went on hybrid, they went on remote that day. We really want to commit to the kids to be committed to a mom and come to school every day. So not really have the option to tune in remotely because they didn't feel like going to school that shape. So it will be easier for teachers to monitor attendance and keep a consistent mom. So, you know, we've been flexible with that because of COVID. Obviously, if we have to quarantine a student, we will allow them to go remote. They're quarantined because they didn't close contact. But in terms of, you know, other reasons, the kids may have been a little more flexible, particularly at the high school level. We would really kind of ask parents to not do that and commit to a consistent mom.
Were you in that seat, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. That will be the next thing that goes out. Probably, you know, we'll be scheduling a parent forum to explain all of that. And then following that, because I'd like parents to have an opportunity to have dialogue. So we might plan that for next week. Write a parent forum and then get parents to commit.
Beautiful. Okay, moving on. This is my school production.
Okay, so I know the board. I met with Mr. Seglio and, you know, the, obviously, COVID has been very challenging for the music department. Guidelines are still in effect for 12 feet social distancing. When students are in either, you know, in band, which has wind instruments. Obviously percussion, they don't have to be 12 feet apart, but most of the wind instruments in the band can sing. It's been very difficult for kids to sing with their masks on. And either way, they're supposed to be 12 feet apart. So we did, I did get a, and I can send this home to the board, just an outline of what the music department has already done this year and what they are planning. With regard to the musical, there won't be a musical this year because it's, it's just too difficult to bring all of the students together, managing students on stage, bringing the younger kids, the spectrum of kids that would be together. The kids in the pit for the musical would be too close. They wouldn't be, they just wouldn't be able to maintain the 12-foot distancing. And we did research that while I was meeting with them. There is no change in any guidance that's still being maintained. However, with that said, we did discuss doing some kind of small virtual events for some of the students who would otherwise participate in the musical. We do, they kind of had a measure or an indicator is, they are scheduling Broadway by the bay, but they're changing it this year to East Rockaway's Got Talent. And there's been a pretty low interest level of students who are wanting to participate. I asked Mr. Seglio, kind of look into it and see why they felt that was. I think it's just a lot for kids in terms of the effort. We have had some virtual performances, which I'm sure you've seen. There's been, let's see. Well, right now, they're in the midst of preparing for NISM. And students have to prepare a video for NISM. So it's a lot of work this year to prepare for that performance. There are also a lot of copyright issues that Mr. Seglio pointed out that I honestly was not even aware of, that if we did any kind of virtual event, they had put, they posted something from our skills and achievement class online. And it was pulled down because it had some music in the background that was not copyrighted, that was copyrighted and we didn't have permission to use it. So there's all kinds of barriers and issues. But they're looking at kind of doing, maybe not necessarily fairy tales, but small performances where groups of kids could get together, film it on a stage, sing, tell a story, and then perform it virtually for the elementary schools. So they're working on maybe four of those events. As I said, NISM is taking up a big chunk of their time and preparing for this virtually. They had the U.S. Marine Band Virtual Flarnet Masterclass the other day. Students in grades four through 12 participated with, we did this last year as well, with Sergeant Ahn of the U.S. Marine Band. We did it for a fleet class last year in memory. We're doing a sixth grade musical orientation virtual event. High school music teachers will host that for the upcoming seventh grade students. East Rockaway has talent. I know Mr. Volpitsch was going to give me some information on the way to collect money.
Yes.
Yes, so right now, we're going, because of the $3.95 charge through school.
My school.
Yeah. We, because this is a major fundraiser for the music partner, for the music scholarships. So they, you know, we will just have to collect checks and hopefully checks through the balance parents to drop them off, or kids can drop them off. If we do have a cheaper way to do something electronically, but that will be coming up.
District.
Yeah, we can't have that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's not, and PayPal charges fees for, yeah. I know that through the Ed Foundation, they had used PayPal and there was always issues.
It was fees.
Right, for that as well. So, let's see. They are going to hopefully stream the NISM performances for students who would like to do that. And then the Triumph Music, Triumph, which is the Music Honor Society, is planning and painting of murals in the music hallway. So they're going to do service projects, as Mr. Schaefer mentioned before. They are planning for a virtual spring concert in May or June. We talked about doing something outdoors. Mr. Seglio felt that would be very difficult even outdoors. They're supposed to be 12 feet away. At the beginning of the year, they were practicing on the futters, which we don't have anymore. So they would have to go somewhere else, to one of the other buildings, because we don't have a field, which is a wonderful thing that we have to do. So we'll put up with it. But that is difficult for students to hear one another when you're outdoors. So we did talk about exploring the possibility of using the band shop at Memorial Park. And the orchestra can actually perform. So we're hoping that we will have an orchestra concert and can do that because they can be six feet apart. So we're looking at using, working with the village. We did reach out to the village about the graduation. I have to say, they were very excited about the possibility. We think that will be an outrageous solution, really bring the community together. If it's large enough, it's not going to be too, but also then use it for some types of concerts as the weather gets better. So they are working on it. I think it's difficult, difficult for teachers. You know, that's one of the things that we had to, when we talked about the reentry planning the other day. The coral, you know, coral room that's right out here is pretty small. And so with the hybrid model, she's able to have half the class in. Now, if we're bringing all the kids back, we will probably have to go to some kids watching, some kids singing, and then kids taking turns. We would, we would not be able to distance all of the kids who is 12 feet apart. But we did see, hopefully, at Founders Day, the beautiful performance. Our new, our music teacher lead replacement, Mr. Russo was, oops, sorry. He was terrific with technology and he's working with, he stayed on as a sub. And so he's working with our teachers to develop the skills to create these virtual performances, like the one at Founders Day. So they are moving forward and they do have activities. You know, the, some of the concerns for other virtual or live performances that Rock Rivalry needs to end before rehearsals can start. AP exams have been moved. There are some barriers. Again, the six-feet distancing, 12-feet distancing guidelines, singers wearing masks makes it difficult to project. So again, they would have to be spaced 12 feet. And outdoors being 12 feet apart, we could try it, but, you know, it's a challenge. I wish we could say that the kids could be vaccinated like the adult and they would be able to be near one another, but that's, we don't see that happening very soon. They're not yet mixing cohorts and schedules. So I had asked about bringing the jazz band in. And I did ask Mr. Seglio to look at that because that's a relatively small group. The concern with that was that it would conflict with athletics. So we discussed bringing that to having them rehearse before school. And of course, it wouldn't possibly impact extra help, but it did before anyway because that's when they had rehearsals for jazz band. Jazz band is small enough that they could be distanced on the stage, the 12 feet apart, or at least practice in small groups and then do a venue somewhere else. Maybe even, you know, in the old purpose room on Rain Avenue. We have to be very creative and explore all solutions. So Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Seglio, and my net, and we're hoping that some of these things will work.
Thank you for that report. And the reason why we had the asset is that we had some grumblings in the community about, you know, athletes are allowed to come back. Why aren't this room, this room, this room? So it's good then when we hear the options that are out there, also knowing that there are areas that we're working at to bring everybody that what they love, the extracurriculars, is possible. So thank you for what I say. So that brings us to our current extracurricular programs.
So Mr. Schaefer covered most of that in his presentation. He left the, on his, I actually can pull the look on my computer. But do you have a specific questions other than what he presented? Because I will send home the document that describes more specifically what the, what each of the clubs are doing.
He did every area that I was thinking of. I don't, I thought it was a terrific job. And again, we're saying we're trying to give kids what they deserve and what they look for in school, you know, from a certain level. That was terrific. Yeah, we'll do that another time.
Okay, I can send, I will send it home in the updates so that you see, you know, in detail. You know, it's been difficult because, you know, we have to respect the staff members who feel that being in school for them is enough of a challenge, their own personal. As I said in the speech, you know, we're all navigating the same storm in a different boat. So some of the teachers who normally run some of those clubs are teaching remotely. And I think they're doing a great job. And I think now that we're moving forward and the weather's coming, they'll do.
Okay, next one on the agenda is Rock Rivalry stipend.
Okay, so Mr. Simorelli came to speak with me. Mr. Simorelli, as they know, is going through retiring this year. It could be a big loss for the district because he wears so many hats, as everybody does. And most important, his biggest hat that he wears is the Rock Rivalry coordinator. He's done that for 25 years. That's really amazing. And I know how hard he worked, his heart and soul. He really gives Rock Rivalry his heart. So were some of you there when he was?
Oh, yeah.
When he was Rock Rivalry?
I was Mr. Simorelli's senior.
What are you doing? Do you have a picture?
I think I probably have.
Okay, so you should do a video tribute this year. You can take a picture of him.
You're my guy.
We did a video tribute last year for our retirees and our tenured people. So that would be a great picture. So anyway, you know, he, he spoke to Mr. Schaefer and then met with Mrs. Creo and I discussing that, you know, he's been doing it for so many years, but it is a tremendous amount of work. He's taken it on. I said to him, now you're coming to ask for more help when you're leaving? You should have asked for it so that you at least could have benefited. But that's obviously, he's somewhat selfless, I think, when it comes to Rock Rivalry. And he really outlined that there's a multitude of responsibilities that have grown over the years. It feels that it would be overwhelming for one person to assume the duties that he has taken on as Rock, as Rock Rivalry has evolved. We know this is extremely important to our school district and our community. And so he is, he met with us and asked if we could possibly increase a amount of stipends. We did discuss different options and we agreed upon one additional stipend to be added in to Rock Rivalry. So there would be one overall Rock Rivalry coordinator, which is what he currently serves in. And he outlined all the duties that that person would have. And then have a separate entrance and old gym coordinator because there's a lot of tasks, reading and approving the themes and scripts, previewing and making sure the classes are working on their entrance, assist the advising with scripts, attend nightly in-school practices to monitor the progress, coordinate the microphone rental and sound system setup, take notes and give final recommendations for those night previews. As far as the old gym with the stands, in normal times, the stands and the murals, coordinating the mural on the stands, scheduling the workshops and the activities, ordering supplies and materials, assigning supervisors, monitoring all aspects of the activity, helping supervise when stands and murals are brought into the old gym, coordinating and supervising the backdrop, hanging in classes, bringing in the tops into the bandroom, roll up and remove the backdrops, and then arrange custodial cleanup with old gym and stadium. So that would be another kind of overall coordinator. We do have the two advisors for each way. So that would make a total of 10, 10 positions for Rock Rivalry. And, you know, we are recommending that because we are able to find that running in the budget. So it would be kind of split the coordinator position. They would still have overall responsibility, but take some of the responsibilities away. The other area that we felt we could cover a little differently was the sports coordinator, sports night. Volpits did that a lot for many years and we didn't pay, I believe. We can't make it up.
Yeah, I can.
But we thought that we could cover that with supervisions because most of it, you know, our teachers get a regular pay for a daytime supervision and an evening supervision. In the evening, supervision, $112, $111 and change. Or if I can, I can't remember. Not that I've been signing them here at all. So anyway, that's a much smaller job and for a shorter amount of time. And it's very well-run and, you know, there are protocols and procedures for it. So we thought that that could be covered by the supervision system. And we would be happy to support that because, you know, everybody does work very hard. You don't expect people, I mean, it's great when people volunteer and they volunteer for a lot of things, but it is a dedicated task and more than that, it's the effort. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to go, we would recommend natural and stipend. And the flexibility of us signing on for the supervisions does not mean to be a threat to a society. We need to be.
Would you okay with that? Sounds great.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Kristen, I'll take over the follow-up.
Sorry. There are four policies that we have for adoption next week then. The first one is student records, 5500. That one was actually just modified to reflect recent state regulations. That one was actually just modified to reflect recent state regulations implementing education laws can be regarding data privacy and security. So there's just some language in there that we need to be very careful with. Stop, we have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, the next one is 4511 textbook collection and adoption. And that was teams to further address issues in educational equity, inclusivity, and diversity. So there are updates to that and to get in terms of language.
Does that include any electronic textbooks or is that a different policy?
I think everything in the company is under that.
It does include any electronic texts, yes.
9240 recruiting and hiring. That too was updated to reflect equity and inclusivity. And it is addressing recruiting and hiring policies that I would like to address. And the last one is 9700 professional learning and staff development. Now, I think I have a note that we wanted Ms. Heck to look at?
Yes, I wanted Ms. Heck, yes, to look at it. It was mostly because there were some deadlines and some new language that would need to be reflected, but it was not.
So we're good to go?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So we have modified this policy to reflect Commissioner's regulations, which changed the term professional development, professional learning, and which now requires that professional learning is addressed hopefully to sponsored faculty. Those are the four policies that we have put out.
Anybody questions? You want to go to that? Certainly, explore your records and policies.
I would like to thank Kristen and Pete as well, who did a lot of work and it's very tedious work and, you know, I have those policies. We're getting, we're really getting through most of the updates from this, but we might be able to take a little proof.
That one's all over yet.
Okay, unless a general, I think, is nominating candidates for both these boards.
So this is just something, if the board wants to nominate, I have the materials here if the board would like to look it over. Basically, by March 22nd, the board needs, if the board is interested in supporting the candidate, that needs to be submitted to VOTs. So we have, I have all the information here. Board would like to review it. They... Are you interested in this today? So actually, they say, I don't think they... Yeah, they are, yep, they are. There are three seats on the Nassau VOTs board that will expire. The seats are held by Susan Bertram, Martin K., and Michael Wimmin, which team carries a term of three years. So I don't...
Are we pre-happy?
Yeah, I'm interested in that because I'm just doing it. Usually, they, I think they are running unopposed. So...
About unopposed, right?
Right. Susan Bertram, Martin K., and Michael Wimmin.
Right, and you were mentioning people there. Susan Bertram, we've had a long time, well-versed, you know, terrific.
That is for you, and then there's one for each trustee.
So what we'll do is we just pass this around tonight, take it home, we'll get over. And then, you know, we'll talk about it next week. You know, sometimes we'll put it back, and then we'll have a go at it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other concerns? Any other topics that we left off the agenda that we're putting off to address tonight? They did, so right now, it's even the card. So we're going to adjourn this meeting of our board session on March 9th at 8:55. Have a motion to adjourn and move back into executive session. A motion? Some move? Senator Dan Piquetel, Senator Vice President Joe Gilvis, all in favor? Ayes, some move. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming out to see you. Thank you. I'm very glad you get home safe.